One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like the ministry to reflect that we held an executive session prior to the meeting tonight to discuss personnel issues. Are there any comments on agenda items? Any comments on agenda items? Okay, I don't see any. Item four are the enrollments in your package through your review. Item five, looking for resolution for the approval of minutes in the last meeting.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion, any corrections, changes? CNN roll call please.
Yes.
This is Gregory.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Dr. Fadola.
Yes.
Mr. Swilly.
Yes.
Mr. Weiser.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold.
Yes.
Mr. Far.
Yes, thank you. Item six, the superintendent's report.
I'm looking for a resolution to approve items one, two, three, and five of the superintendent's report.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Dr. Fadola.
Yes.
Mr. Swilly.
Yes.
Mr. Weiser.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Far.
Yes. Heather, do you want to do the supplemental on the new business?
Yes, I'm sorry, I should have done that. And items, or I can do it right now.
Go.
One and two on the supplemental.
Motion, approve.
Second.
Motion, do we have a second?
Me.
I'm sorry.
Shane gave you.
Yes.
Yes, you got a second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any discussion, items one and two in the supplemental? Roll call please.
Mr. Perry.
Fadola.
Yes.
Mr. Swilly.
Yes.
Mr. Weiser.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold. Mrs. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Gregory.
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold.
Yes.
Mr. Far.
Yes. Committee reports, do we have any committees that?
Yes, report on an extracurricular meeting we had, what night was that, Wednesday?
Monday.
Monday. Monday.
We are moving forward now with the winter sports, the meeting, Mr. Bosscher, Kenny, myself and Lori Bennett, we were talking and we came up with a list of the issues that we had to follow. We are following the governor's guidelines right now based on capacity of venues in regards to capacities. For most of the sports, we're really targeting the senior parents and then going down the line with juniors. We're trying to make sure that the kids are on the court, in the pool, on the mat, and that we get some level of community participation, but we're targeting the seniors. The second thing that we talked about, and not only for sports, but a lot of different extracurricular activities now are being scheduled, various play practices, right, Mr. Bosscher?
Yes.
And different activities even outside of athletics. So, we're moving forward, we are still following our health and safety guidelines, we do have to make some changes with now the contact tracing, dates of quarantine, also, Mr. Janeski brought to our attention, if a sports team is out for so many days, they have to practice. So, let's say they're out eight days, I don't know the exact, but they might have to have three practices before they get back into competition. So, we're going to follow the PIAA guidelines in that respect. In regards to the masks, we had a lengthy discussion on the health and safety and what we are doing officially is we are a non-mandated mask school. What that means in athletics is that we are not mandating that the athletes, the student athletes, wear a mask during exertion or at the competition. However, in the spirit of cooperation with other teams that we play, if there is a team that requests our team to wear masks for safety issues, we, our coaches, are going to comply with that. I will tell you as an aside, I went to the boys' basketball practice and I went to the girls' basketball game last night, and I think it was done very well. I will tell you that the coaches, at least the ones that I saw, were substituting the players when they were short of breath, the kids were pulling their masks down when they had on the side, during the competition. When they went to the sideline, everybody had their masks on, including the officials. The officials were there in masks. So, I believe that the PIAA officials are also complying with any school request. In regards to all the health and safety issues, like with wrestlers, we're following the guidelines for wrestling, actually, the cleaning the mats in between the individual matches. We are complying with the PIAA wrestling, I guess, rules in that these masks that we wear at school have a piece of metal in here. So, there's a safety issue, not only with wrestlers, but even with other physically interactive sports. So, we're trying to get rid of these, or not have the kids wear these during competition if they're choosing to wear them. So, we're trying to follow all the health and safety rules, guidelines, following PIAA recommendations, working in cooperation with other school districts, and maintaining, you know, a good environment to get those kids, at least from our standpoint, get the kids on the court, in the pool, and on the mats as best we can. What did I forget, Mr. Bosscher?
Just a big shout out to the athletes, the coaches, the parents, and spectators, because everyone was very, you know, cooperative and very enthusiastic about, you know, doing everything they can to keep it healthy for the sake of getting these athletes, you know, like you said, on the mat, in the pool, on the courts. A big shout out to the community and our athletes and coaches for making it possible.
And we're live streaming the varsity, we are live streaming every home varsity event.
We've got wrestling going on right now. There may be a competition with this, I don't know.
One can only hope.
Does anybody have any questions from the board in regards to the extracurriculars? So, do we need a vote or anything just to change the guidelines?
No, we just updated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Just to clarify, on the superintendent's report, item four has been tabled.
Correct.
New business, looking for resolution to approve bus and van contracts?
Second.
Motion, second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Swilly.
Yes.
Mr. Weiser.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett.
That's the same.
Mr. Gregory.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Swilly.
Yes.
Yes. Item two on the new business, your ballots are at your places, I believe, for the LIU 18 election, three completed by each of you. Are there any other new business? Do you have anything you want to present, Heather?
No.
Okay. Any other public comments? Anything at this point? I do ask that you come up to the microphone and give us your name.
So, what we ask is that if you're going to make public comment, that you identify yourself so that we know who has spoken here tonight, and that you have two minutes, and we're.
What was the second question?
And that you have two minutes.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Brody, I have two daughters in eighth and ninth grade, and I actually have something prepared to read.
Fine.
If I could do that.
Sure.
As we're navigating life during the pandemic, many parents of the district have shared common opinions, frustration, and concerns on social media, which has led us to organize an effort to improve our kids' educational experience. We know many people have individually expressed concern to the members in attendance, and that many left felt unable to make a difference. Before getting into specific interests of the statement, we'd like to acknowledge the following. The pandemic is real, many people have lost loved ones, many are at high risk for serious complications from COVID, many people are scared, including teachers and faculty, and they're scared for themselves, their children, their parents, and other loved ones. Political overtones have further complicated our ability to determine clear paths forward, and the data and science presented to us all has led us to many differences of opinions. With this understanding, the group agrees that the best education for our children is through the traditional methods of in-classroom teaching. We believe that we should and can fully return to the system. While we believe that this is also the goal of the board, we have many questions regarding the plans and timing to get us to that point. Here are the questions that we're seeking answers to. When is the school board's comprehensive plan to have all children back in school full-time? Are you trying to achieve full-time this year, and will we return for the beginning of next year? What are the criteria to fully return to school? Who's determining or has determined the criteria? Will the criteria change over the next several months? Are the state, or are state or federal funds given to TASD specifically to address COVID? How are the funds being allocated, and can we get the parameters for how the funds could be used? Do the funds influence the return to school? Could the district lose funds if a choice is made to fully return? Will teacher contract negotiations affect decisions in the next couple of months? What are the virtual classroom sizes? Do we still have the right resource allocation in place for our teachers? How many teachers are teaching both in-classroom and virtual classes? How much space is needed to maintain social distances for a full return to school? Is personal liability a concern for the board members or administration, should all state recommendations not be followed, and would waivers reduce these concerns? Are teachers in opposition to or in support of virtual classrooms? What are the current plans to address teacher and substitute shortages? Are all funded positions staffed? Has anyone addressed standards and practices for teachers' use of sick time? What are the current failure rates compared to last year, and what are the grade averages now compared to last year? So, here are some of the things that we've learned or observations that lead us to believe that we can achieve our goals sooner rather than later. Other schools in similar COVID-positive areas have fully returned to school. So, Lehman, Hughesville, Muncie, they're examples, and I know that Lehman has offered support to other schools in figuring that out. Positive cases in other districts have not led to the return to full virtual teaching. Data is not suggesting that full return to school is causing significant increases in cases. The elderly are most at risk, the children are not. Other schools have full virtual classrooms, even in similarly rural areas. Vaccines are now available and teachers are high on the priority list. Most families have members in the workplace as lockdowns are no longer in place. Seventh grade was able to go nearly all virtual classroom while most other grades or classes haven't. Parents need to know what the district plans are to make the best decisions regarding our children's education. If the plans or timing don't meet our expectations, we should be able to pursue alternate options. We don't accept the new norms that are currently in place in TASD, and here are some of the reasons why. C-3 and hybrid teaching is not in parallel per original plans. There is limited or inconsistent structure to the out-of-classroom days. So, some kids don't even get dressed, the due dates or times aren't consistent between classes or grades, parents aren't home during the day and can only help during evenings, causing late nights for all. Most parents do not have the training to be able to teach their children. The online tools are still struggle and their use aren't consistent between classes. Many classes have few or no Zoom meetings or check-ins during out-of-class days. Students and parents feel like they're left on their own to learn with limited instruction. Grades aren't indicative of success. So, kids have learned to better cheat, some kids are just defeated by the situation, and it's not that they're incapable. Social skills aren't being learned and in-person communication isn't available, kids miss their friends and extracurriculars, so having two cohorts makes that much harder. Screen time is often the same in classrooms as it is at home, which is all way too much. Many parents work and childcare is a significant struggle. Some parents just aren't teachers. Extracurricular activities are available and just as important to our children's health, and some kids just aren't teachers. Our children's resiliency is not a factor in these decisions. It's not our children's responsibility to overcome what they are going through, rather, it is our responsibility to give them every tool possible to succeed. Our current plan is not preparing our children to succeed in their adult lives. We have all learned so much during these last 10 months, and none of it has been easy, but many of us are in the new year and we want to regroup, reassess, and reorganize. We want to raise the bar and hold the board and administration accountable to higher standards, and most importantly, we want to help in this achievement. We respectfully request answers to our questions and consideration of a full return to school as soon as possible. We request that the option of full virtual learning be available to those with alternate views or needs. We would like to know what's needed to achieve this end and want to be a part of the plan to get us across the finish line. On behalf of many parents who contributed to this statement, thank you. There are a bunch of people here representing tonight and a lot of others that couldn't make.
Jennifer, I would ask, I would ask, in fairness to the board, there were at least 50 questions there.
Yeah.
Right?
There were a lot.
Yeah, so, I mean, yeah. So, what I would request is that you email me that document.
Absolutely.
Okay, so that we can wrap our heads around it and make a response.
Yep.
Okay?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I thought it was, okay.
Anybody else?
Okay, all right. So, what I was just informed and I, but I'm not entirely sure of, is this being livest? It is not being livestreamed because we're livestreaming the wrestling.
Not livestreamed, or is it?
We're working on a chunk.
Okay.
They're working on, it's being recorded, it should be.
Okay. Okay, it'll be recorded and put up, okay, okay, all right, yes.
Hi, I'm Teresa Pasolka, I just had a couple of questions I wanted to clarify with the current structure. In the December 18th meeting, I believe, the K through six was five days a week, is now four days a week with Fridays virtual. Can you explain why they needed the Fridays to go virtual?
Because we were, our teachers are trying to stay ahead of the kids and trying to upload content onto the platform, and it was becoming very difficult, and so if we want the product that's online and available, should we have to go virtual, that was a request that we made to the board, and they granted it.
But I'm confused, if they're in person, what are they building? If they're in person, what?
Still using in the classroom.
Yes.
Curriculum is still part of camps, so they still have the curriculum at camps.
Okay.
Right, and when the kids go out, like we had to be out for a few days, or if we have to close a building for a few days, that's what they're going to be using at home.
Okay.
So, it's important for us to stay ahead of them.
Okay. And as far as the hybrid with the Zooms, my son's in the STEM Academy.
Yeah.
And so, I love that they've been having, you know.
We're trying to get better.
Zoom classes every day, I love that.
Yes.
What, logistically, I don't understand is why can't they, like when my son's in school on Monday, why can't they be zooming that class with the kids who are at home so everyone gets the same instruction every day, so no one's, like they don't have to split the curriculum in that manner? Is that logistically possible, technically possible?
That's a good idea. Okay, can you, all right, so what she's asking, she's asking why we don't Zoom every day?
Like when my son's in class, half the class is there.
Yes.
Why can't at that time there also be?
They do Zoom every day.
Right.
No.
But why, why, why aren't we filming in the classroom? What's going on, and her son is watching at home, and then the next day her son is in?
Right, because we don't have the teachers to do that right now.
But I'm saying this would save on teachers, because you only have one teacher, you have the teacher in front of them teaching the math where half the class is in there, and at the same time, there's a camera set up so the kids at home are also watching the same lesson at the same time.
Right.
Logistically and technically, is that possible, and if so, wouldn't that save versus having a teacher teaching the in-person class and then a teacher teaching the Zoom class?
I understand what you're saying.
You understand?
It does change the model, which is not, it's not that we can't do that, and we've been talking about that.
Uh-huh.
But, so, I think that we have some improvements that we have been discussing this week, and that we will be in a position, once we get the resources, to make some changes.
Okay, I just, because I know that teachers are spread thin at this point.
Yes.
So, that seemed like that would consolidate a bit. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? I will say that it's my belief that the preference of this board is to be in school as many days as we can. It is not the preference of this board to be out virtual. We would prefer to be back four days or five days a week versus the current hybrid. That would be our preference. Right now, I don't think it's, we can do that, but as soon as this board feels we can, that's where I think we want to be. I don't think anybody on this board would disagree with that statement.
No, and I personally have not written off the rest of this school year, much less getting into next school year. I, if the vaccine were to become available in the next couple of weeks, supposedly after your, from first dose to when it, you know, and the second dose to when it's effective, at most is supposed to be like six weeks, I believe. So, I mean, we're not even halfway through the school year. So, I know that we're going to be up against things that are related to, you know, state recommendations and that kind of thing, but I believe that the tides are somewhat shifting on the guidance for education. I mean, anybody who's been on social media recently, just today, I've seen three or four different articles that people were posting about the recommendations changing, first changing for the younger kids, and like all these things, like get them back in school. So, I'm still hopeful that that is going to happen for this school year, and I can't envision a scenario in which this board would see a recommendation come back saying, all right, we can put more kids in the classroom, or we can do these kinds of things with the state's blessing, and that we would say, yeah, no thanks. So, I think it's too soon to speculate about the fall, but my, I'm more inclined to think that the fall is going to look more normal than ever, and I have not written off personally the rest of 2021 yet for this school year.
Hi, Rob Sewicki, I have three kids that attend. I'm just curious as to why, I spoke with Heather, but as to why we have surrounding schools that can go full-time and we cannot. Why? We have Elk Lake, Lake Lehman, we have several other.
They're just, they're not, they've decided to not social distance, like that's basically the answer. We're social distancing and they've decided not to.
But they're having success, I mean, they're not shutting down.
I'm, I'm not going to claim that that they wouldn't, but I mean, if, you know, you choose your risks that you're willing to take.
Okay, but we have, we have lots of rooms that don't get used during the day, like can't we move kids, have?
I don't have enough staff. I don't have enough teachers, and if we don't socially distance and our teachers start getting sick, I don't know what the answer is. We're going to get shut down.
I don't either, but.
Because we can't staff.
What's going on now isn't working.
Okay.
At all. I mean, my kid's going to be going into 11th grade, and it's, he's not retaining anything because they get assigned assignments via email with no instruction, and it's just, it's, compared to what the other schools are doing, Tuncanic, it's a shame. That's.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll make one comment, so, Rob, I, you know, I know you from wrestling, and you and I coached together, and I know there's a lot of frustration with the group, and there's some good people in the audience, and Jen, I tried to keep up with how fast you were reading your questions, but I couldn't, so.
Right.
And you know from our time together, I'm a pretty quick writer, but I'll, we'll review those when you send them to Heather. You know, there's a lot of challenges in this world we live in today, I think you did a good job recognizing that at the beginning. We have an issue that we don't know how to fix. The board and the administration together is trying to make the best decisions balancing the health and safety and the educational content. So, I disagree that it's not working at all, there's definitely some challenges here that we will continue to try to work to improve and change. As a board, we've made the decision that we are going to respect the six-foot distance in our classrooms for the safety and health of our teachers and our staff members, there's definitely other districts that are doing things differently, that's their choice, it's not Tuncanic's choice. And so, we can do better in terms of the educational content, and I believe it will continue to improve. We have teachers and staff members, most of which are busting their hump to try to get better and to try to reach out to kids every day. We also need it to be a two-way street, and so that's not reflective of any comments I heard from anybody in the audience, but this is a pandemic and everybody's worn out. Our kids are worn out, us as parents are worn out, our staff members, our administrators, it will improve, and I, like Holly, hope it will improve later this year, but I'm fundamentally not willing to put 30 kids in a classroom and just hope for the best. And so, if we looked at attendance, most people are choosing not to come, period. The administration would have this data, but following Thanksgiving, we have some representatives here who want to be in school every day, and I would like my kids to be in school every day. I have two of them, they're doing the hybrid thing, I would love for them to be in school five days a week, but that's actually not the common thought process for most kids in our district today. There's many of them who have chosen that they don't want to come back to school because of the safety risks that they believe that are out there for them and their family. So, we as board members are doing our best to try to balance. Rob, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, listen, the way this works is you make your statement and I get to respond to it, okay? I'm not disrespecting you when you were talking, I'd ask the same respect for myself. So, I believe we're making progress, we have a lot more to do, and I respectfully agree with a lot of what Jen brought up, and so we need to listen to that and take that into consideration and see what we can improve on. That I totally agree with.
Hi there, I'm Laura Kaiser, and kind of a different topic, but my son is in the AP Physics program currently, and at the moment, we have a remote teacher teaching the AP Physics program, and it is causing a lot of struggling to go, going on. My question is like, what is the status with that? I understand that the teacher had offered to teach remotely, but we've gone out of the district and away from the teacher who is used to teaching it, does a fantastic job at teaching it, and hiring someone out of state and really not connecting with the kids at all. So, I was just wondering what the status is on the AP Physics.
Todd, you want to answer that, or you want me to?
Yeah, we contracted out with the AP Physics one, it's Accelerate, we're using their platform, it comes with the instructor. We, I can't speak to the personnel matter, that's not my place, but we've got that program up and running. Basically, we signed a contract with this Accelerate just before we left for Christmas, wheels started turning just before New Year's. Obviously, last week, we were, you know, virtual, so now the students, I live with those students, you know, each cohort of students, every day that they've been in the building, that program's up and running, yeah, there's some, there's some learning programs, and they're now learning, our students are now learning that platform, they're familiar with it from last year, we used Accelerate courses this spring of last year. So, I anticipate that we'll be some, we'll probably some activation for this week and next week, and that instructor reports that that's not unusual, he said, straight up, he said, no matter what you join up these courses, it takes a lot to, we still learn the platform to get the relationship with the teacher. I've zoomed with that teacher, he's very responsive, and he's very excited to help us get through it, so. Is it as good as our live teacher in person? Absolutely not, I can't say nothing about our physics teacher, you know, but given our circumstances, this is what we have, I'll tell you that finding physics teachers is tough, we were not able to find a live physics teacher.
I guess, as a parent, I would just hope that you would give priority to accommodate maybe some of the needs so that we can have our own instructors here instead of hiring out. You know, I don't know all the details, but I think maybe some accommodations, cooperation. I don't know all the details, but I think maybe some accommodations, cooperation.
I'm sorry, Laura, what'd you say? I can't hear.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot the mic. I just, as a parent, I would hope that you would, you know, take, consider some accommodations to keep our own instructors instead of hiring out.
I think we ought to address that topic.
Yeah, can somebody?
I mean, we can't, we can't let that go. So, so here's, Laura, what I can say is, is I believe those accommodations were offered, and that, Craig, you're shaking your head, so I guess we'll have to have a conversation offline about it.
I just, I think the whole board would much prefer, if it's an option, that we were using our own staff in this circumstance.
Right. If we could use our own staff, that's great. I love it. I'm all for it.
Good evening. My name's John Schultz. Please hear me out when I say this. I was never a big fan of the school board, okay? With that said, I applaud each and every one of you. Because we have never gone through this before. It was very trying on all of us. You, for the decisions, our children, the staff, and the parents, okay? It pains me to actually do that. Nobody likes to say they were wrong. And I do. I applaud you all. It was a very tough thing that you guys had to go through in the last year and a half or so. So thank you for what you did. I'm asking you, as polite as I can, to consider the potential outcomes that may arise. And I do have one very important question. You said you were understaffed. Why were we staffed a year ago before this hit? And now we're understaffed. Can you enlighten me?
Yeah, no, sir. Whatever that was, if, so what we did is, we pulled all of our staff into the classroom. So even teachers who were teaching his reading specialist, we were pushing his groups, now they have their own classroom. Those classrooms are small. So we still, we have an X number of kids, and we have them more spread out. So if more teachers in your home private classrooms with 10, 15 kids, at the high school, we had to split the kids in half, right? Same number of teachers, but we split the kids in half so that we can socially distance them.
Okay. And I respect that.
Okay.
It makes sense.
You understand what I'm saying?
But what I don't understand, and this is above you too, so listen to me for a second. Every time you get into a car, it's dangerous. You don't know if you're coming back. We take it for granted. Do we want to live in fear? Do we want to prepare so that those accidents, we try to prevent them? You have gone above and beyond. In my opinion, you've done a fantastic job. Between the masks, the social distancing, and the whole thing, excuse me, nine yards. But what I don't understand is why we can't get to the next level. I graduated from the school district. I didn't go to college. I was a partial service director on the largest dealership on the East Coast. My son was born, I walked away. Now, I'm actually the assistant, no, it doesn't even matter what I am. But I had a good education, okay? From this school. I care a lot. It's why I never left. My kids are here, because I take a lot of pride in them. I talked to Mr. Bosher today. Said it right out. He was above and beyond amazing. Every teacher I've had here with my children up to this point, above and beyond amazing. But now it's getting to the point, my kids are straight-A students, and they're having a hard time. My kids are not the only ones. That's why we're all here today.